And I'm really glad to be here tonight for this, for the item that we're going to talk about. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and then Barb, go ahead.
Mr. Bills? Mr. Foley?
Here.
Mr. Muncie?
Here.
Ms. Pritchett?
And Ms. Williams?
Here.
And I'm just going to walk through some of the, some of the rules of the meeting tonight just so we, so everybody kind of knows how, I know we don't tend to probably visit this kind of meeting too much, so I'm just going to kind of walk you through the process for tonight. I'll administer the oath to members of the public who, who wish to speak on an agenda item. I'll go ahead and call the agenda items and ask for staff. Jack will present the case after we, after we call the agenda item. We'll ask commission members if they also have questions after Jack makes his presentation. And then we'll go ahead and call for a motion in a second after, after we've heard that. The, the public, the, and Barb will go ahead and perform the roll call for that. And we'll also have public comment. Each speaker's going to have three minutes if they want to speak. If your comment has made by a previous speaker, we would just ask that you not try to replicate that so much. And then the other thing we would just say is that we'll ask for any, any public comment in favor or against the application. And we'll also ask staff if any comments were provided prior to the meeting either through email, I guess, Jack, or, or some other ways as well. We'll ask the applicant if they would like to rebut any of the public comments if somebody says something that, that maybe you think is, doesn't, doesn't, is something you feel like is not the right thing. And we'll ask if there's any further commission among, any comments among commission members after that. And then we'll ask for a motion in a second to recommend approval, approval with conditions, or disapproval to the applicant's request. And so I think with that... And this is case number PC Planning Commission 23-04, the planned development modification to the Village of North Clayton, Plan Unit Development Final Development Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. As Mr. Foley indicated, this is case number PC 23-04, parcel number M60031020112. It is approximately 3.7 acres. The applicant is Bellis Rela Pizza LLC, and it is a modification to the final development plan that was previously approved for the Village of North Clayton. This application was received, was received on November 8th of this year. The applicant is Bellis Rela, as I previously indicated. The property owner is the City of Clayton. Public notice was printed in the local newspaper and public notice, public notification was sent to all surrounding property owners within 300 feet per the Clayton zoning code. Proposed project site is located along two road frontages. One of those roads is National Road, which is to the north. The other is Esther Price Way. Esther Price Way has also been called Lofton Drive and Pro Action Drive in the past. The current zoning of the property is a planned development district. This was approved several years ago. Staff has reviewed and provided to each planning commission member the following documents: application, the site plan, and elevations. Bellis Rela, for those who are unfamiliar, is a small business owner. They presently have and operate two wood-fired pizza ovens in the region. They've been doing local catering around the region, and they're actually growing to three trucks, three ovens this coming year. Bellis Rela is owned by Elizabeth Wiseman and Gail Okafor. They both grew up in the City of Clayton, where Elizabeth continues to live, as do their parents. They've become one of the region's most popular mobile food vendors. They do fundraising events all across Northmont Community, as well as across the Miami Valley. They used to go out to Northmont Community Farms. They're just a very popular food vendor in, in the community. One of the things that we heard during the plan claiming process, which was our update to the comprehensive land use plan, was the desire from our community to have more locally-owned small business restaurants, which this is, fits right into that desire of our community. The proposed restaurant is a restaurant. It has a kitchen for them to be able to do their food prep for their mobile business, as well as house their food, food fire ovens. It would be able to eventually expand to about 3,000 square, to add in additional 3,000 square feet for an event space on the restaurant. This is the property in question. As you can see, this is National Road right through here. This is Esther Price Way. The residential units for Village of North Clayton is back here. As you can see, the property is zone planned development district. Everything in Village of North Clayton is zone planned development district. The properties directly to the east are the single-family residential zoning. And the property directly to the north across National Road is actually in the City of Inglewood. This is just a close-up of the property in question. So the Phase Two of the final development plan for Village of North Clayton originally included a sportsplex and medical center. It was, this particular piece of property was included with the acreage right directly to the south of it. It was originally almost eight acres. And that sportsplex and medical office building was originally approved at 180,000 square feet. In comparison, this particular use is less than 4,000 square feet currently with a potential to add an additional 3,000. So you're really looking at approximately about 7,000 square feet compared to what was originally approved, which, again, 180,000 square feet. So the intensity and the density of that previous approval is considerably larger than what is being proposed today. This is what was approved. As you can see, the property on the left, I'm sorry, the site plan on the left is what was approved as part of that final development plan for Phase Two. The picture on the right is just some, some marketing material. The reason that we included that with this particular presentation is these are close-ups. You can see that the sports complex that was supposed to be at this particular site in question, very large, a lot of parking. It was just quite a bit more intense than what is being proposed today. Just a little bit background of the property in question. Again, it was included with the original final development plan. Due to the Great Recession, the housing crisis, soon this property fell into part of the Tom Peoples foreclosure bankruptcy case. It was picked up by another developer. That gentleman actually passed away, and this property fell into probate court in Indiana. So it was locked up in probate court for several, several years. They actually accrued close to $100,000 worth of back property taxes owed to the City of Clayton. So City of Clayton approached the probate court and proposed to purchase the property just for a little bit more than the $105,000 that was owed in property taxes. We did come to an agreement with the probate court. They sold us the property. The whole intent of the City of Clayton acquiring that property was to partner with the day metro library to bring the Northmont branch out to that, that particular site as an anchor for that area. As you can see, and I can go back and show you the site plans, there's a 50-foot gas easement that runs diagonally across that property that makes doing any serious development kind of cumbersome. When the library went out there and they looked at it, they determined that it didn't meet their needs because of that gas easement. So over the last couple of years, the City of Clayton became engaged with Bellis Rela to discuss this. That was something that they had to take into consideration also. So that is something that, they've actually been working on this for a couple of years now. They had to go back to the drawing board a couple of times because of that easement, as well as rising material costs and labor costs and all those types of things that have been the result of the pandemic. So this has been going on for quite some time. They've actually came back with a smaller site design compared to what the original one. But again, a lot less intense than what was previously approved. The traffic generate from this particular use is going to be a lot less than what was going to be generated at the sports complex and medical office. So those are all things that, from a staff's perspective, we all take, we take the, all those potential things into consideration. We did send the requests out to all the different department heads, or different departments, excuse me. The Clayton Police, their only response was that they want to make sure that there's appropriate numbering on the building for address so for, if there's ever any calls, that the police and fire are able to easily find the property. The Fire Department has no comments specific to the plan modification. They just want to make sure that as we move through the permitting, that they get all the necessary plans so that they can look at the fire suppression, fire alarm, everything that's normal for any type of new construction like this that they take on normally. Public Works Department had zero comments. Our engineering company, they provided four comments, which the applicant, Ferguson Construction, that their contractor, they did submit an email to us either at the end of last week or today. I just forget, we've had a couple of emails going back and forth. They have revised the drawings to take into consideration all these comments, and they have addressed all these comments from the engineer. So these comments have already been addressed by the applicant. So this is the site plan in question. You can see the 50-foot gas easement that cuts through here. They're going to locate the building back here. If you're familiar with the site, there's kind of a area through here that gets overgrown. There's kind of, it's kind of a dry swale area. They're going to clean all that out so that you can see the building from National Road. Obviously, it's going to be a destination location for families and people across the region coming to, so they're going to dress it up very nicely. This is the building in question. As you can see, again, if you're familiar with Village of North Clayton, the elevations are very similar to the existing buildings out there, so it will coincide with the commercial buildings that are currently at the site. This is the floor layout. You also will see, so National Road comes through here, and then this is Esther Price through here. They're going to have outdoor seating, and this is where the future addition will take place. Again, it's approximately 3,000 square feet, and they're looking to do that here in the next several years as, as they take off and what have you. These are some other elevations. You can kind of get an idea of the rendering of the interior of the, the building. This is just to give you a kind of an idea. But again, it really, it follows what the aesthetic quality of the Village of North Clayton presently is with the commercial building, so. This is preliminary landscape plan. Again, staff will work with the applicant to ensure that the landscape plan follows all the requirements of the planned development district out of Village of North Clayton. So when we're looking at the particular application, there's a few things that we have to take into consideration. Since it is a planned development, we have to look at Section 1111.21 of the zoning code, and this addresses modifications. All modification is, is it's saying it differs from what was originally approved. It's not a rezoning. We're not looking for special permit. It's just the fact that it's different than what was originally approved is why they had to submit the application. And the difference being, originally it was 180,000 square foot sports complex slash medical center. Now it's more along the lines of, you know, a little under 4,000 square foot restaurant space with the potential to grow to 7,000. So subsection one states because of difficulty in being able to supply precise data at the time of the approval of the final development plan, it may be necessary to make certain modifications to the final development plan. That's the reason we're here today, because 10 years ago it was difficult to project what might go there. Subsection two, modification, "To the final development plans shall not deter from the general intent and purpose as originally approved by City Council. No modifications unless approved by City Council shall be approved. That will increase density or intensity, decrease parking and loading areas, or reduce usable open space, and reduce distance between structures and the perimeter property lines." So again, the proposed plan modifications of the planned development district included with the application is much less intense, we've discussed that, than what was originally approved in 2005. I think we've hit on why there's such a difference, 180,000 to 7,000. Currently, it'd be less than four. So it does not increase the density or the intensity. It actually decreases what was originally approved. In terms of decreasing parking and loading areas, it does not decrease the parking and loading areas that is available to the public. There's still all this public parking on the streets. It actually, in terms of private parking, it has no impact on the Village of North Clayton. The, the public spaces are still, will continue to be there. The architecture, again, consistent with the other structures at the Village of North Clayton. And number four, the applicant will be required to submit stormwater plans as every commercial use that comes in to the City of Clayton is required to do, and our engineer will review all that and make sure that it conforms with all applicable federal and state regulations for stormwater plans. So staff recommends that the application be approved with the following conditions, and the following conditions are this: that they adhere to all the conditions or comments that were made by staff. And as I previously indicated, they've already revised their drawings to incorporate the comments made by our engineer, and the only other comments were from the Police Department in terms of making sure that the numbers on the address are able to be highly visible. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you may have.
I have a question, a couple of questions, Jack. So when you're mentioning the swell that's behind it, it'd be cleaned up, you said?
Yes.
And then added landscaping back there, or what would go back there?
The swell's going to be in front of the, the restaurant, but there will be landscaping around the building. I think, and the applicant and their contractor can probably speak to this a lot better than I can, there's probably some limitations on what is able to be grown in there, but from a visual context, they obviously want the front of their building to be able to be seen from National Road. So, you know, part of their plans is to continuously keep that open and cleaned out because part of the attraction is being able to see it from National Road.
Sure. And I have one more question. Since this is going down to such a smaller size, then that, does, does that leave room for growth on the rest of the?
So it does, and that's a, that's a good question. So if you remember, originally that parcel land was almost eight acres, so it was divided by the probate court in order to sell off some of it. So, so there's still four acres located just to the south that's still available, that's owned by another entity, and they're able to market it and develop that, that, that particular parcel separately from what they're doing here.
I always seem to have questions, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
At my office meeting, they always said, I know if somebody's going to have a question, it's going to be Kim, so.
We're going to keep, just, and that's a really good question, in front of that, sorry. I know, I forget you have to do this.
Hey, Elizabeth, I also, I think we have to give the oath to anybody who wants to, wants to speak.
Oh.
Jack, can you do that? Do you have the oath? Do you have the point?
Oh, gosh. I didn't mean to go through a whole thing. I was just going to raise my hand.
So do you swear that everything that you say is true to the fullest of your ability?
Yes.
Say I do.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, sorry. I was going to tell you that the, the area, because it is big, in the front, there's a big, where that gas crosses, we're keeping that natural prairie. I think maybe that was your, what you were referring to. I don't know what's going in that ditch, but I know in front of that, we wanted to keep that really nice, we're not going to plant grass or really anything there. Just kind of like, keep it wild and pretty. And it's pretty low. And, okay, cut low. Yeah. And so my other question is, so there are several other pizza restaurants kind of close to that? Yeah.
I'll just say one thing. If we can just finish up with staff, and then we'll bring them up, and then as applicant, then, then they can answer any of your questions at that time.
I actually did have one question, Jack. In terms of the, the parking itself, you, you mentioned that we're good with that, and we feel like there's, you can bring that map up. You feel like there's plenty of spaces?
Yeah, there is. And, and whenever there's a parking, a new parking lot being proposed for a new commercial building, there's a specific ratio that they have to follow per code, and that's something that, that we'll look at. But our architects already looked at the parking, and the only comment that they had had to do with handicap parking spots. So they felt that that met, met the requirements that, that we have in the code. But before we sign off on the final permit, that's something that we'll review again.
I think, Elizabeth, I, I have a question. Just had one question, and I know in the, you know, in the description of the, of the proposal, the, the planned expansion may be not quite, maybe a couple of years away, but can you talk about what that could look like? Just, just for our kind of, just, just for our kind of thoughts here?
This is my first time doing the swearing in. So do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you? Please say I do.
I do. Hi, I'm Jeff King with Ferguson Construction. To answer your question, the way we've designed the building is to allow for a future event area, that's probably the best, best way to say it. It's probably going to be a year or two down the road. So we've allowed on the initial site plan to shows the future parking, and it also shows the location of that expansion.
Would it be attached to the building? Okay, yeah. So you can get to it from inside?
And there's a site plan too that shows the future parking.
I don't think I have it on there.
Okay.
And Jeff, the first phase will be built so that, so that when and if you want to do that, you can, you can do it.
Absolutely. We're building all, I wish the drawing was up there, but it allows for the expansion. We're not going to have to interrupt the existing parking that we're putting in now, so it kind of circles around the future expansion, so we're allowing for that expansion right now in all of our plans.
Yeah, so my other question was, I have not had the pleasure of having your pizza, so, with there being the already established pizza places there, what will make you stand out? Why will yours be different than, than people going to the national chains?
Are you in? She's ready. Let her have it, Jack.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
My name is Gail Okafor, one half of the Sisters of Bellis Rela. And the question is, what makes our pizza different? So many things. Mostly ingredients that we use, and also the training of our staff. It's kind of an artisanal process. It's a hand-tossed pizza. It's a wood-fired oven, which is a different pizza than Donato's or Marion's. It's a, it's a completely different thing. It's based off of Neapolitan pizza in Italy, but ours is more Midwestern than true Neapolitan. But we use excellent ingredients, and we take great love and great care with our pizza. And we're very popular already. We're very popular, and we're very busy with our current work. So we hope to just continue that by offering a place for people to get our pizza anytime they want, not just at the truck from April to October.
All right, so do we have any, any more public comment in, in favor or, or also opposed to, to the applicant, applicant's request?
Mr. Foley, can you open the floor for public comment?
Oh, sure. We need a, a motion to do that.
Move to open the floor for public comment.
Aye, second.
Been moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carried. Yes, sir? Do you want to come up and state your name?
We want to swear, everybody?
Let's just do it. Anyone that's want to speak, can you please raise your hand? Anyone else that's going to speak? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Sir, could you provide your name and address?
My name is Bobby Beavers. My address is 4949 Steinerman Street, Clayton, 45315. Scott Fraser, who's the own, who's the outgoing president of the Homero Association, asked me to speak on his behalf. He gives his apologies. He's at home sick with the pneumonia. He says that he wanted to say that the Carrada family has a longstanding positive history in the community. Now I can see. All of the community people who knows them, who knows the family loves them. The daughters and their family have participated with the village in some of our community activities. There'll be a great access, as, as said, I'm sorry, to the village and the City of Clayton. My comments are, I echo the sentiments of Scott. Marlena, my wife and I, as the patriot and the matriots of the community, as we fondly call ourselves, we believe that Bellis Rela fits the nice, fits nicely with the, with the original vision for the development. I believe that it aligns very nicely with the live, work, and play concept. Being the third family to build in the community in June 2008, and knowing its original intent, we supported every business that has been in the commercial building, which is diagonal to our house. We supported Esther Price, which is a stone throw away from our house from the beginning, and Marlena had a stocking incidentally. Just kidding. So we'll be supporting Rela Bella. We support the approval of the plans for Bellis Rela. They serve the community, they've served our village with their fuel truck, the food is good, and we'll definitely patronize you.
Hello, my name's Kevin Schweitzer. I sit on the North Clayton Community Authority, so I wanted to come on record and, and let you know, we have discussed Bellis Rela during our community authority meetings. We are in favor of it. Looking back, I've been with the community authorities since the beginning, and you look back at what this was planned to be, and we're, we're on the third developer now. I think modifications have to be made the way everything has evolved. We do have a commercial oven out there. It's currently sitting empty. They've had some businesses out there, and like, like Bobby said, you know, it's a work-play-live community that was intended to. I mean, this gives you, it's not a big sports complex, but it's still a viable business, provides a service for the residents out there, and its location along National Road and, and where it's, where the high school and middle school is, the Y, I think you're going to have a lot of traffic coming there, and they'll see what's back there in North Clayton and get some interest and want people to build, and hopefully developers we're working with now will, will, will get things figured out and will have different types of living options back there. But I just wanted to go on record saying that, you know, the community authorities are in support of this, and I think it's very, you know, it's a viable operation and will benefit the residents that are there now.
So there was supposed to be a medical center, a medical?
Yeah, attached with the sports complex.
So does, does that make a difference, that that's not being included in the plan to the residents that live back there? Was it a plus for that to be there?
I mean, since that's happened, you know, we got Kettering Hospitals over in the Y now, so I mean, that's just right across the street. That has not been brought up once we've talked about it. I mean, the sports complex basically was a Ponzi scheme, and the guy's in prison now, so, so that's kind of went away. I mean, they, they asked the city for a million dollars, and we didn't give it to them. So I, I, I see it, you know, that the sports complex and the medical was kind of a service organization. I mean, I know it's a retail restaurant, but it's still more of a service to the residents and the community. Like you said, it's, it's oven, pizza, which, fire wood oven, so it's nothing that we have around here. I mean, I travel up to Arkham to get a winery up there, so I, I think, you know, there's a lot of options there, and this, looking at what was planned and in a way, things have progressed. I mean, we're looking at, you know, looking at different options back, and, and then the housing back there where it was originally planned, so I think we, you know, we've dealt a hand, so we have to look at changing things, and I think this is, this is an easy change. Thank you.
Has there been any opposition from any of the, either your organization or any of the Homero Association, anything like that?
Not with Bellis Rela. With the developers, we've had some talk, but not with this. Everybody likes their pizza, so.
And in terms of any staff comments and for opposition, we've received none.
I have one question with you, actually. Are there any more public comments?
I'll move to close the floor for public comment.
Question in second, and does close the public comment period, all those in favor?
Aye.
It does. Yes.
Which is a plus?
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I think it's a huge plus. I, you know, I can't speak for Bellis Rela, but I would assume that that's one of the, the attract, the attractions to this particular property, is that you do have a lot of foot traffic and bicycle traffic that goes right in front of this location. You know, from a staff perspective, we, we imagine that with Bellis Rela going there, it's going to be able to kickstart some other potential businesses looking at the site, and they're going to see the benefit of the location there. But we've always felt that the multi-use trail was, was a huge asset to the Village of North Clayton as, as a whole.
I'm moved to approve the application with staff's comments.
All of us in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Mr. Foley?
Aye.
Mr. Muncy?
Aye.
Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
And Ms. Williams?
You'll need to have cauliflower, cauliflower crusts, pizza there too.
I have a couple of items real quick. So I, I know I told everyone individually about the meeting change, but I just wanted to like, I'd like to get it on public record, since people do look at the meetings, that the December meeting, we do have one application already in. It will be on Tuesday, December 19th. Again, it has changed because of the holiday season and because the city council moving their schedule. So it will be at seven o'clock, Tuesday, December 19th. And before we close, I would like to introduce our newest staff member, Ellen Snyder. We hired Ellen just about, what, a month ago?
Yeah, just about.
About a month ago, she's our new zoning and GIS manager. So as we move forward and we progress and transition to different things, Ellen will be working with you guys down the road. So I wanted to introduce you guys to Ellen. Do you, you want to say anything?
Hello.
Okay.
Welcome, Helen.
And there we go.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting for this evening. I second that.
Mr. Foley?
Aye.
Mr. Muncy?
Aye.
Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
And Ms. Williams?
Aye.